Good evening and welcome to the September 28th meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in the audience with us tonight, and we're glad to have those that are at home or other places watching us on TV. Before I tell you who's going to lead our pledge tonight, there are some folks we'd like for you to remember during our moment of silence. Lori Turnbull, who is a teacher at Discovery School, father passed away over the weekend, along with Craig Nellius, who teaches at Pittard, his wife Leslie passed away over the weekend. But along with that, we've also got a birth, Saoirse, little girl born to our school board member Jimmy Richardson. We'd like for you to remember her and her family during our moment. And now we're going to have our pledge led by Mr. Don Bartsch, Principal at Overall Creek, and Mr. Ken Roche, Principal at Bradley Academy. Gentlemen?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. I believe it's you now.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Now we'll move to the election of the Board Chair and Vice Chair. According to Board Policy 1.200, Tennessee Code Annotated, Section 49-2-202 and Section 25-6 of the Murfreesboro City Code, Board Officers are to be elected annually. The state statute mandates that the Board only elect a Board Chair, however, Board Policy 1.200 mandates that the Board elect a Board Chair and Vice Chair. The term for the officers to be elected will be from November 1st, 2021 through October 31st, 2022. Nominations for Board Chair will be given first, followed by a roll call vote of the entire Board, excuse me, followed by a roll call vote, and then nominations will be taken for Vice Chair with a roll call to follow. A majority of the entire Board, which is four votes, is necessary for one to be voted into office. Board Officers cannot be elected by acclamation. After nominations have been made and seconded, Mrs. Van Cleve will call your name and you should state the name of the nominee you are voting for. Please remember, it takes four votes for a member to be elected. So now I'll open the floor for nominations for Board Chair. Mr. Ballard?
I just have a question and maybe submit an idea that with Mr. Richardson out tonight, are we under, can we postpone this another till the next meeting? The other Board members speak up if they feel like they want to continue, but I would like to have his input on this.
I believe, let me double check the policy.
I thought it had to be done now.
I think, I think our calendar says it has to be done in September.
Okay. I know it's on the agenda. I didn't know if it was ironclad. As long as you're there.
Yes, according to Policy 1.200, it has to occur at the first regular meeting in September, so we cannot, unless we, somebody moves to suspend the policy and move it to October.
I was just suggesting for full participation, so I understand. Thank you.
Ms. Goff?
Can I make a nomination?
Yes.
I nominate Butch Campbell.
Second.
Thank you. Any, Butch has been nominated, Mr. Campbell has been nominated and seconded. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing no more. Ms. Van Cleve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Ballard?
Uh, Mr. Campbell.
Ms. Moore, same. Mr. Campbell?
Campbell.
Ms. Goff?
Campbell.
Ms. Moore?
Campbell.
And Mr. Settles. That's six votes for Mr. Campbell, therefore he's the Chair.
Congratulations again, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the confidence of this Board and I've enjoyed working as Chair with him and hope we'll continue to do so for a living.
With the Chair being elected, now I will open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair. Ms. Goff?
I'll nominate David Settles again.
Is there a second? Any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing no more. Ms. Van Cleve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Ballard?
Mr. Settles.
Ms. Barton?
Same.
Mr. Campbell?
Settles.
Ms. Goff?
Settles.
Ms. Moore?
Settles.
And Mr. Settles.
Is there anybody? No, uh, Settles.
Congrats.
Six votes for Mr. Settles.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Again, Mr. Settles and Mr. Campbell, I yield to you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Board Members, you have seen the agenda. I will ask, we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any discussion or question? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none. I will remind Board Members, please, that when you are speaking, if you will remove your mask for television coverage and production. Communications, Ms. Trao?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We have a few communications tonight, mostly just lots of thank yous. The MCS STEM program received a generous donation from the Business Education Partnership Foundation in conjunction with Nissan Neighbors Program. This was a $25,000 grant. It'll be used for our current STEM schools as well as those who are seeking STEM designation, so that was a nice check to receive. Staples of Murfreesboro donated 1,200 Staples Connect pencil boxes. Hold on one second, I brought, I brought my show and tell.
All right.
So sorry about that. Staples donated 1,200 of these pencil boxes. They have about 19 different supplies in them that are sent out with our schools whenever they need it. These typically get used when we have new students coming into schools throughout the year, so you come to school and you have your supplies ready to go because every child needs a brand-new pencil. So just wanted to show you that, and we appreciate Staples. The City Schools Foundation Back-to-School Dash did go virtual this year. They had over 120 runners and walkers. Funds raised from that dash will go directly to our teacher grants, so we appreciate all of you that ran or walked in the City Schools Foundation Back-to-School Dash. Mitchell Nielsen Primary would like to thank Carriages South Community Credit Union for their generous donations of umbrellas for staff that work the car rider line, as well as generous check to their library. And car rider line has been inundated with lots of rain for a few weeks there, so we appreciate those umbrellas. We'd also like to thank World Outreach Church for school supply donations. We appreciate, one more time, all of our partnerships with our community and all of the benefits that we receive from that and hopefully the benefits we give them with great educated children. Our outreach department also thanks the schools in our district who made donations to the Humphrey County School Supply Drive, and we talked about that last time, so we sent supplies back to Humphreys County and we will continue to support them in their efforts. The outreach department also wants to express their appreciation to Jason Deckard and the Official Liverpool Supporter Club of Murfreesboro. That club donated $2,000 to our district. It was used, each school will receive $100 for food for staff, or whatever they want to use it for, $300 for the Injunct Care Fund, and $300 for the Backpack Program. So we appreciate that Official Liverpool Supporter Club of Murfreesboro. And the Murfreesboro Linus Club also donated snacks for our Backpack Program, so once again, we appreciate them. In October, we're going to be celebrating a few things, so I did want to go ahead and mention those. October is National Principal Month, so we will be celebrating our principals all month long. It is also Farm-to-School Month, and as you know, we have a strong Farm-to-School program at Murfreesboro City Schools, so we will be supporting those farmer educators. And it is National School Lunch Week. I think that's October 11th, right when we get back from fall break, so we want to celebrate our staff members and thank our community for everything they do for us. And that's your communication, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. We are so proud and so glad to have our community sponsors that do so much for our students and our, and our teachers and our staffs in Murfreesboro City School. All right, next item, public comment, Dr. Duke?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Board. Tonight, we have three individuals who have requested to address the Board by completing the necessary paperwork. Each individual will be called to the podium in the order in which the form was received. Per Board Policy, they will have three minutes to address the Board, and their time will begin once they state their name. All of these individuals have confirmed their address with the Board, and our first public comment speaker tonight is Ms. Anna Stewart.
Thank you. My name is Anna Stewart, and I want to thank the Board for the prudent and unanimous decision made last month to require masking indoors in the city schools. I applaud each of you for working together with each other and with your administration to consider the data and to act to protect students and teachers. While we saw MCS cases rise exponentially each week at the start of this school year, the case counts began to drop that first full week with a mask mandate and have continued to drop each week that masking has been required. In fact, last week's case count was the lowest since the first week of school, but it still rivals the highest case count in any week last school year, a year without a governor mandated opt-out. We are moving in the right direction, keeping teachers and students safe and keeping schools open, thanks to your decision to require masks, but the work is not yet over. The results MCS has seen locally are consistent with recent national data. Two studies published last Friday by the CDC provide additional evidence that masks protect children from the coronavirus, even when community rates are high and the contagious Delta variant is circulating. Masking is one of the many layered strategies that work to protect the most vulnerable within our community. As we continue to face challenges related to this pandemic, I urge you to continue to keep children's well-being at heart and to focus on the data rather than the politics or the emotions others may try to insert into this issue. Please extend the mask mandate you instated last month. Please extend your protection of all city schools, students, and employees. It is clear that each of you are serving our community in this capacity because you have the well-being of our city's children at heart. And as a parent of students in this district, I would like to thank each of you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mr. Michael Dewey.
Mike Dewey, representing Rutherford Students First. Where do I begin with just three minutes? Let's start with the disappointment from the last meeting. Unfortunately, this Board voted on a policy that was not disclosed to the public, just as you appear to be doing today. Having a bullet saying COVID protocol is not sufficient transparency, you might say it's not a policy, therefore it does not require first or second reading or sufficient time for interested parties to review. The Board's voting pass record in recent history shows that aside from your COVID protocol vote, a vote has not been taken on directives and guidance, yet here we are again voting on it. I highly recommend you disclose the COVID policy information today, give the public sufficient time to review, and then take a vote at the next meeting as your policy indicates. The next concern are comments made by numerous members of this Board indicating that the Board should defy Governor Lee's executive order, even asking about consequences. A member said, "I feel like we're being a little timid as a Board when we don't stand up and say to the Governor, 'We know how to take care of our kids here in Murfreesboro better than you do in Nashville or wherever you live or whatever it is you're doing," because we understand what's going on here. We see these kids. I ask the Board, "Do you even know my child's name? Do you know their birthday, their last doctor visit, their favorite color? Are you prepared to take on all responsibilities of my child since you obviously know how better to raise my children?" I find it hypocritical that you could say this comment but ignore how we as parents don't know how better to take care of our kids in Murfreesboro. Another Board member said they'd listen to a doctor because they know what they're talking about, and basically, parents don't. My response is, "How on earth can you say that a parent doesn't have the best interests of their child in mind? We don't get paid for the care we give our children. We do it out of unconditional love." I have yet to see a doctor have a zero-cost visit. What I hear from this Board member is, "Parents are too stupid that we're going to be a dictator and make the decisions for you." Lastly, I leave you with some actual MCS data, you know, our own kids in Murfreesboro. At the highest week this school year, just 1.2% of students had COVID. This means you're changing 100% of the student's learning environment so significantly based on just 1%. Doubt me, check the 2021 TCAP scores that'll be discussed later. Quarantine is yet another ridiculous situation in MCS, quarantining 78% of COVID-negative students compared to those who are coming up positive. Do I think I'll change your mind today or vote based on what I've presented? Absolutely not. My goal is to expose you to the public of your lack of transparency, willingness to break the rules and laws, hypocritical nature in your comments, and the fact that the local data does not justify what you're doing. Are these harsh comments towards you? Yes, but you must be held accountable for your actions as public representatives. Thank you.
Our last speaker is Dr. Kristin Salter.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Kristin Salter, and I'm a Board-certified OB-GYN who has practiced in Murfreesboro since 2013.
Doctor, could I ask you if you'll pull your mask down?
Sir?
Would that bother you?
If I could please keep it on, if my OR staff can hear me when I have my mask on, thank you. I come here tonight to advocate for the children I have delivered, who are now students in Murfreesboro City Schools, my pregnant patients, who are teachers, and the students with pregnant mothers at home, and lastly, my daughter Catherine. She's a third grader at Discovery. Please remember that none of these children are old enough to be vaccinated. They are vulnerable, therefore it should be all of our duties to protect them. This virus has already claimed the lives of 22 children in the state of Tennessee alone. 22 children. First, I want to thank you for passing the temporary mask mandate last month. More than 200 of our children were diagnosed with COVID in the first few weeks of school, and countless other children had to stay home those first few weeks because they were contact traced and quarantined at home. Since passing this temporary mask mandate, we have seen lower numbers of affected children and better attendance rates. Mask work. I also stand before you as a representative of the medical community at St. Thomas, Rutherford, in the words of my late colleague and dear friend, Dr. Jim Burner, who succumbed to COVID last spring. We take immense pride in providing what he called "great care right here." If you knew Dr. Burner, you could hear him saying those words. Our hospital is expanding, but not as fast as the virus is spreading. The last few weeks at St. Thomas, Rutherford, have been some of our darkest since the pandemic began in spring 2020. Due to a sharp rise in the volume of critically ill patients and the resulting strain on our resources of both hospital beds and staff, over the past three weeks, we were forced to suspend all of our non-emergent OR cases. Our ICU is overflowing. Countless surgeries have been postponed to care for the largely unvaccinated critically ill population in this community. Our nursing and medical staff are tired and losing hope. The National Guard is stationed at our hospital. Therefore, I come to ask you to continue the mask mandate. Only if we can decrease the spread of COVID in our community by partnering with local schools can we turn the tide on this awful virus and get back to a sense of normalcy. Please consider maintaining this mask mandate. Please consider it based upon the metric of community infection levels as a way of assessing need. Last week, our rate of local confirmed cases was higher than the previous week. Our county transmission rate was 4.5%. Specifically, please maintain the mask mandate as long as the community infection rate is above 10% threshold. Please do not stop the mask mandate until several consecutive weeks of transmission rate less than 10%. Thank you for your time and your consideration and your care for our children. Thank you.
That's all of our speakers tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next item, Spotlight on Education.
Yes, and I'm actually going to go to the podium, if that's all right?
All right, that's fine.
Down here, so over the past few weeks, the State Department of Education has been releasing data and school designation from last year's state assessment program. We know that this last year was a very challenging year for all of us, which included multiple transitions from in-person to virtual to hybrid teaching for students and teachers. Later tonight, I'm going to be sharing with you an overview of our data from last year and the successes that we saw despite these challenges. However, tonight, there are two groups of schools that we want to officially recognize for their tremendous work. So I'm going to ask the following principals to come up, and we'll talk with them. So from Discovery School, newly named Dr. Christina Boone, come on up. From Black Fox, Ms. Tiffany Striebel. From Mitchell Nielsen, Dr. Victoria Shields. And Ms. Robin Newell. From Overall Creek, Mr. Bartsch. And from Reeves Rogers, Ms. Natalie Hardiman. We are so pleased to say that these five schools have obtained individual school value-added composite scores of a level five. This is the highest value-added score a school can obtain. This recognition indicates that these schools, specifically their fifth and sixth grade students, moved ahead in their position compared to their peers from across the state. It is because of the immense work and focus of our teachers, our support staff, and administrators, that we are able to see such great gains in the middle of a pandemic. So I want to congratulate these schools and formally recognize them in front of the Board and officially say thank you to all of them, their teachers, and the principals and the representatives for their hard work.
Yeah, give them to the right principals, though.
So of course, we had to get big signs to put in front of the school so we know that they're a level five school, so thank you to those principals. We are also thrilled to recognize two of our schools who earned the designation of Tennessee Reward School for the 2020 school year. Reward schools are recognized for showing strong academic achievement and growth for the students they serve as well as their subgroups. This year, in the state of Tennessee, with over 1,800 schools, there were only 188 who earned this distinction. So we want to formally recognize Overall Creek and Discovery School for earning the right, the distinction of Reward School. We have signs for that. Then we have for each school as well, the letter from the state formally recognizing them as a Tennessee Reward School that they will be able to hang in their building, so.
Excellent.
That's Mr. Bartsch, and thank you. And before I sit down, I do have to also recognize Irma Segal. I don't think Ms. Spencer is here tonight. Irma Segal, this school, like all of our schools, did amazing work last year in the midst of huge challenges, and Irma Segal missed our designation of Reward School by hundredths of a percentage point.
Oh, wow.
So, but we're still proud of them, and we have so much to be proud of in all of our schools, and these recognitions tonight represent the hard work of our staff and really just the fortitude they've shown to get the job done in an incredibly difficult year. So congratulations, everyone.
Absolutely. Very good. Proud of all the schools, in particular the staff and the principals and everybody involved. All right, Board Members, I have a motion to approve the consent items as printed.
Done it.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, action items. Board Policy 1.102.
Yes, tonight, we have several policies that are up for their annual review. This first policy is Policy 1.102. This policy, the proposed minor changes to this policy reflect legal changes, which adds the HISA as a permissible qualification for Board Member's legal status in addition to the high school graduation or receipt of a GED, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Have a motion to approve the policy 1.102?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Was it?
It was Ms. Ballard.
Goff, I'm sorry.
Lisa had it.
Thank you, ladies. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Ready? Okay, Board, Board Policy 1.401 is our next policy, and this is presented to the Board for review on second reading. Specific items for the Board to consider would be the elimination of lines 35 through 38 regarding the allowance of public speakers at a meeting who have not formally requested to speak prior to the meeting by submitting the policy input form. During the August 24th meeting, the first reading of this policy was passed as presented in your notes.
All right, we have a motion to approve Policy 1.401. So moved, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Settles. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Any discussion? Ms. Moore?
Yes, I have a question about this. At the last meeting, we discussed this for a bit, and I still left a little bit confused about it, and so I was the one who asked for this to be brought, not a part of the consent for this meeting, just so we could have a little more clarification on it. I support the change here. What I'm trying to understand is, what is still the, I don't know, for lack of a better term, the escape hatch, I guess, where if we do have someone and the Board does say, even though we don't want random people popping up to comment at meetings without us knowing about it beforehand, if we do decide someone has something we want to hear, how do we allow that to happen still? So it's not the norm, but if we do have a situation that's really unusual, we want that to happen.
Right, so it's first important to note that this change would not preclude the Board from inviting someone to speak. That's always been, that's, I think that's in this policy number one or two on the list of reasons. The Board can ask somebody to make a presentation before the Board, so this would only affect individuals who have not been asked by the Board and want to speak. That being said, without this in the policy, the only other way that it could happen would be through a motion to suspend this policy and allow, a Board Member would have to make a motion to suspend the policy. It would have to be seconded, and a majority of the Board would have to vote to allow the person to speak.
So, so the motion just would not be, I move that we let this person speak, it would have to be, I move that we suspend the policy and allow this person to speak?
Because our, our policy outlines when a person can speak, so we would have to say we're going to So we would have to say we're going to set that aside and add an additional reason for
Okay.
someone to be able to speak.
Okay, thank you.
So it would be a move to suspend the policy and allow John Doe to speak.
One motion, you could do both. Okay, thank you. That helps, I still had a question after last meeting, so thank you. That clarifies it.
Mr. Settles?
I have a question. It's a follow-up to what Amanda was asking. A motion to suspend the policy for the purpose of letting somebody speak, how many votes does it take to suspend the policy temporarily?
It would take four.
It would, it's just four? Okay, still just four. I thought it was more than that. That's all.
Okay, any other question? Ms. Barton?
What is the turnaround time for somebody to, I'm like, how quickly? I guess what I'm trying to say is, how last minute would it be that somebody would ask to speak and be able to go through the proper channels? If somebody asked today to speak tonight, or yesterday to speak tonight, would we?
24 hours.
I think that's ample. Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the policy. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next policy, 1.501.
Yes, sir. The proposed updates to board policy 1.501, which deals with visitors into schools, clarifies when the approval of a principal is required for school visitors to ensure that student privacy and atmosphere suitable for learning is maintained. And we are recommending approval as presented.
All right, do we have a motion to approve policy 1.501?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question? I have a question. When a visitor comes into the building and they present, they've got to present an identification. Is there anything done? Do we take that, like if it's a driver's license, do we take that and hold it then until the visitor comes back and is ready to leave the building?
Yes, sir. So we scan that through our, we have a system that we scan those IDs through, and then we hold on to those while they're in the building.
Okay, so then they've got to come back to pick up their driver's license or the voting card, whatever their ID is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other questions on the policy? Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next policy.
Our next policy is board policy 1.803, which is tobacco-free schools. The proposed updates to this policy better align our policy recommendations with the American Heart Association. It promotes the importance of disciplinary practices that promote the reduction of tobacco products, and it removes a requirement for a citation. And we are recommending approval as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the policy as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Question or comment? All in favor of passage, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next policy, sir.
Board policy 2.401 is on gifts and bequest. The proposed minor updates to this policy specify that there must be an express specification in writing when property contributed, given, or placed on the school premises is not intended to become school system property. And we are recommending approval of this. And it's a minor change because we do have some employees who will bring, we allow a mini fridge in that classroom, or in a work room, or something like that. And so what this does, under the old policy, basically says if you brought it, it was the school's property, and letting them know that it's part, that it remains with the teacher.
Mr. Settles?
So basically, when I bring my fridge, I need to bring a note along with it that say, this is mine and you can't have it, something like that?
We want to make sure that we're expressly saying it's not a donation to the school.
Because I do remember that rule back from when I was in school, that once they bring it to school, it belongs to, I think I had a teacher that lost an air conditioner like that one time, back when they didn't have air, well, that was a long time ago. That was all my question, Butch.
Thank you, sir. We've had a motion for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Do you have a motion?
We had a discussion first.
Well, I'm sorry.
All right, do we have a motion then to approve policy 2.401, gifts and bequest?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles.
I do have a question.
I have a question.
Does this apply to gifts to teachers? Or is that a separate policy? So if a class pitches in and buys something for the teacher's classroom, do they have to specify this is a gift for the teacher and it doesn't stay with the classroom? Because I've had that happen over the years before with teachers.
They would, this says you have to put in writing if it's not going to be a gift.
Okay.
So if they just give it, it would be assumed to be a gift to the classroom?
And not to the teacher?
And not to the.
So you'd have to specify?
Yes.
The parents would. Okay, thank you.
Another question. We've had a motion and a second to approve. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 2.500.
Yes, this is the deposit of funds, and this is just a minor wording change as well. The proposed update just removes the word county from the line because the county trustee does not deposit funds for MCS, and we're recommending approval as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve policy 2.500?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Now, any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. COVID sick leave.
Yes, sir. We are actually proposing a new policy specifically for the 2122 school year. As we're all aware, the case numbers and impact of the Delta variant in our schools has been greater than we had anticipated. Due to this, we have seen our employees impacted by the virus despite many of them having been vaccinated. So policy 5.302.1 would provide eight days of paid leave for one occurrence to be utilized if an employee is required to remain out of work due to a personal confirmed diagnosis of COVID-19. If approved, this policy would be retroactive to August 2nd of this school year and would expire on May 27th at the end of the year. And we are recommending approval as presented.
I happily make the first motion.
You make the motion to approve?
Absolutely.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We don't want to second it. Whichever pick you can choose.
Second, Ms. Goff?
How did I know?
All in favor say aye.
Wait a minute.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were so flab.
I know, I know.
All right, discussion, sir.
The only question I have, the retroactive piece, oh, I'm sorry. The retroactive piece, it goes back to August. Does that mean anybody that had this is applied to, then if they had to use sick leave, we're going to put that back? Is that how that works?
That is correct.
Ralph, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm so happy to see us doing this. This is not necessarily the norm as far as other school districts are concerned. And I think it's incredibly wrong. So I really appreciate you suggesting this, and obviously, I support it wholeheartedly.
Any other comments?
I think it's great. I thank you for the foresight.
Motion has been made and seconded. Now, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Motion, any disagreements? Nobody disagrees. All right, next item.
We're going to start with policy 6.203, which is on school admissions on first reading. And again, this is one that's up for annual review. And actually, the next three policies are all similar in how we're adjusting them. So the proposed policies to 6.203 clarifies and explains zone waiver procedures that are already in place as a directive. Specifically, it outlines that zone waivers are required annually and are only applicable to one school year based on the enrollment and capacity of the school. We are recommending the addition of this language to our policy so all stakeholders are fully aware. And we are recommending approval as presented.
We have a motion to approve the policy.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ballard, now, any discussion or question? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
On the opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Yes, sir, next policy.
Board policy 6.205 is similar to our previous policy. It's the same proposed, or it's very similar proposed updates to this policy, clarifying and explaining zone waiver procedures that have been placed through administrative directives. And we are recommending approval as presented.
Have a motion to approve policy 6.205?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. We have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any question, discussion? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. 6.206.
Yes, sir, this is our final proposed update to policies regarding zone waivers and the similar ones. It also clarifies and explains the procedures that we have been using through directives. And we are recommending approval as presented.
All right, do we have a motion to approve policy 6.206, transfers?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Now, question or discussion? I see none. All in favor of passing the policy, say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. School resource officers.
Yes, sir. Tonight, we are presenting the 2021-2022 Memorandum of Understanding between the city schools and the city of Murfreesboro for our SRO program. We have made some minor changes to our MOU from the previous one. Most specifically, these include we've updated the names of the programs that our SROs are using and some specification on communication requirements if formal police action becomes necessary. We are very thankful for our SROs and the job they do every day. And we are recommending approval of the presented MOU.
Do I have a motion to approve the school resource officer MOU?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Questions, comments? Mr. Settles?
I have a question. You mentioned the communications piece being updated on the MOU. What, well, in general, you don't have to give me specific, what exactly? As far as the communication piece and?
And I will look to find the exact line. I believe.
I don't see any red on this one.
That's right, and it's not, and it is not red. At the end of point F, and it says, "SROs shall make the principal of the school and the director of schools aware of such actions prior to the action occurring."
Prior to the action occurring. That's a complete addition or was that a clarification?
That's an addition.
Addition, I thought so, okay. I appreciate that addition being added. I will say that. Thank you.
We've had a motion and a second to approve the school resource officer MOU. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, next item. Certificate of Compliance.
Good evening, board.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm doing well, thank you for asking. The document that you have in your packet states that MCS students have access to all textbooks and instructional materials for the 2122 school year. We are required each October to submit this to the Tennessee Department of Education. So tonight, I am just asking for your approval to do so.
Have a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms., uh?
Goff.
Goff? Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
COVID protocol.
Yes, sir. This is the approval of our COVID protocols. During the August 24th board meeting, the board voted to approve a temporary mask requirement in all MCS buildings when individuals are indoors and when social distancing cannot be maintained unless a family formally opts out of this requirement. Since the August 24th meeting, we have had 740 approximately students who have opted out of this requirement. This means that approximately 92% of our students and 100% of our adults are masking in schools. We have been publishing our numbers weekly on our website. And you will notice that we started seeing a decrease in our numbers beginning in September. This past full week, we showed 43 positive cases in our school, which was the lowest full weekly numbers we have seen since the first week of school. In addition, it is a third of the cases we were seeing during our peak week of August 23rd. In your board packet, I've also included a chart that illustrates information not provided on the website. Specifically, it outlines the number of students on quarantine due to an exposure. Just as our cases of positive students and staff have decreased, you will also see the numbers of students on quarantine have decreased each day. Although we are not out of the woods yet, we are very encouraged that our numbers are moving in the right direction. The current mask requirement does expire tomorrow, September 29th. It is my recommendation that the board extend the current mask requirement in all MCS buildings when indoors and social distancing cannot be maintained until Wednesday, November 10th, unless a family formally opts out. Families who have currently opted out will have their request automatically extended until the November 10th expiration date. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding this.
We have any questions for Dr. Duke?
So, Dr. Duke, you stated that 92% of our families did not opt out. Is that correct?
That is correct.
It's pretty high.
Very high.
And the opting out process was not difficult, from what teachers told me. It was pretty easy.
Yeah, we just ask that they go on our COVID website, and there's a link they fill out. And then Miss Trail and her team each day check that and send any new informations directly to the principals.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve the extension?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move for the extension of the policy as stated by Dr. Duke.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Ms. Barton?
Aye.
Ms. Goff?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Settles?
Yes.
And Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
That's six ayes, so the motion passes.
Thank you, ma'am, very well. Thank you, Dr. Duke.
Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I was wanting to ask Dr. Duke about the email that you sent us regarding two students of ours that was in the hospital. Do you have any, do you have any follow-up on their condition?
We have not received follow-up on that.
All right, next item. Budget amendments and transfers.
I'm actually going to be presenting the budget amendments tonight because they're a little different than what we normally see. So we have several budget amendments tonight that are specifically tied and related to the state grants that you have already previously approved. So the first is the ESER 1.0 grant. This original grant for $1,298,107 was allotted in the spring of 2020. The budget amendment that's before you tonight is to re-budget carryover or unspent funds for the new fiscal year. The remaining funds being carried over are $65,758. The majority of this carryover is going to go into the substitute and benefit line items to help cover the increased costs of subs that we have found at the beginning of this year that we were not expecting. We are also allocating a portion of this money for needed instructional materials specifically for sixth grade that were also originally budgeted into grant, so we're just re-budgeting this carryover. And we are recommending approval of the ESER 1.0 budget amendment. The second budget amendment is for our ESER 2.0 grant. Last year, again, you approved the entire $5,642,067 grant. This is a three-year grant, and we will need to re-approve the carryover each year. And this is where it gets a little different than normal. Because if you remember, last year, we budgeted the entire amount as if we were spending it in one year. And then every year, we will re-budget the carryover. So last year's expenditures totaled a little over $2,200,000, leaving us $3,359,000 available for the next two years of the grant. The amendment is very consistent with the original approved programs, which largely center around our second summer, our summer school last year and our summer school again this summer. And we are going to recommend approval of those as well. approval of those as well. The final budget amendment is regarding our nursing grant. So in June, the board approved the nursing grant that we were awarded because we are offering COVID testing in all of our buildings. With the increase in cases that we've seen this year, we have seen the need to hire additional nursing staff. Specifically, this budget amendment would fund a full-time nurse and two full-time clerical staff to run a COVID hotline. We actually started this hotline several weeks ago, and we've been using a sub nurse to fill that position. The COVID hotline has been very successful for us so far. It's reduced the workload of our school-based nurses. The hotline is answering parent calls, so if a parent calls the front office and says, "I have something about COVID related," they don't send it to the school nurse, which they have historically done. They would route that directly to this one nurse who is answering all the questions. She's entering that data in Skyward, and she's giving those callbacks as needed. So all three of the grants fall under the budget amendments for tonight. To summarize, ESER one and two is just the carryover, and it's very consistent with what you've already approved. With the nursing grant, that is a different-- a change we've made, specifically adding that additional staff to run that COVID hotline for us. I'm happy to answer any questions you have on that.
I just have a comment. I'm so happy to see the hotline. I'm sure that was probably your idea, wasn't it, Dr. Duke?
It was always a team effort. I think Nurse Walker was advocating very-- I'm not going to take credit. Nurse Walker was a strong advocate. We need to get something going.
All right. Well, that is fabulous, because there's not much we can do to relieve the nurses' load, but it would help if they weren't constantly returning parent calls or coming to the phone when a parent's calling. So, thank you.
I think our real hope is as we're seeing the numbers decrease--
Yeah.
And we are seeing our numbers decrease very rapidly. With the decrease in numbers, plus with the addition of the hotline, that we really are going to be able to get our nurses back. They've done, again, like everyone, Herculean work, especially those first few weeks in August when we were at that peak, what they were-- the amount of time they were working with students, just taking care of that. We-- I applaud them. I know the board applauds them, but we're excited to offer this as a possibility if the board approves that amendment.
So do we have a motion to approve the budget amendments? I'm sorry, Mr. Ballard?
You know, we're going to always be looking for bluer skies ahead, and when we-- each time we come forward with a request to approve personnel to be added, I'm wondering, what are we going to do with the day the blue sky is open and we have-- we have extra manpower that we possibly wouldn't necessarily need under these circumstances, or only because of these circumstances?
I think it's a great question, and it's something we're very aware of as we are taking in this money that's coming at us in such large amounts in some capacity. So for these specific positions, much like the COVID position we added last year, it is very specific for this timeframe, and the people taking it understand that it is, as we get through, it is a grant-based program to meet this need right now.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the budget amendments?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any question-- any further questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. All right. Thank you, sir. Reports and information. Enrollment.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
You have your reports, and let's first look at enrollment tonight. Should be the first listed in your group of reports. Enrollment for this period, which ended on September second, we'll have another report coming up in the next week or so after the twenty-day period ends. But for the period ending on September second, we had nine thousand, three hundred and forty-nine students. If you look to the box to the right, that tells us that's three hundred and forty-nine more students than we had at the end of last year. I did go back and look at the previous year to see where we were at this time last school year, and we were at eight thousand, eight hundred and seven students, which was an increase of five hundred and forty-two students compared to the exact same time last year. At the-- at the-- at the bottom of that sheet, you'll see how that's the BEP funds and so forth, as always, are reported out, and not much changes in those as compared to past years. The average attendance percentage for that time period was ninety-four percent. And if we look to the next sheet, which is the PTR, the pupil teacher ratio for the first period, I'd like to give you a second to click through to that spot. But if you-- when you get to that spot, if you look at the bottom of that sheet, you'll see that our overall pupil teacher ratio district-wide is nineteen point three five for each teacher, for one teacher. So when you take that ratio, that's one teacher for nineteen point three five students. If you look above that number, you'll see that the ratios for grades K through three are eighteen point seventy-one, and fourth through six are twenty point five eight. So all are within range. Then you look at individual schools, you'll see that all the-- or those are within expected ranges as well. If we turn our attention to the truancy sheet, which is your third sheet in your forms, we'll see the numbers are extremely low, and we're proud of that and glad. We took extra care this year to look at those numbers and make sure that we didn't count any students who were quarantined or had-- under those circumstances. So if you look, we have only six students. As compared to last year, we had about ninety. So I think the biggest change there is our reporting procedures and our-- and our attention to those details regarding which kids were quarantined and so forth. That was all brand-new last year at the beginning of the school year, and I think that's why those numbers may have been significantly different. So that's good to see. Those students are-- any students within our buildings that have ten unexcused absences. So that's-- that's a great low number. And then the last form is the chronic absenteeism, where students have missed ten percent or more. Now, as if you remember from last year, as we started looking at these numbers, this number will be extremely high, because all you have to do is miss two or more days, and that means excused or unexcused. So that includes a lot of students, although we did pull the quarantine students out of this number as well. But that-- with this number, we have two thousand, two hundred and ninety-six students who missed two or more days during the first twenty-day period. So that puts them at ten percent or more absences. And that's-- that's what qualifies you for being considered chronically absent, but we will look at that at the end of the year, and we'll see a lot of difference in those numbers.
Joe, is there a correlation between the number of absences and enrollment?
As far--
Very much?
As percentage--
Yeah.
Not a direct correlation. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Personnel report?
Yes, sir. Next is your personnel report. This is a little bit longer report because it encompasses two months. The last time we've got-- you've gotten a personnel report was in July. So first, you have your certified personnel, and secondly, your classified personnel. If you have questions about specific individuals, I would appreciate it if you would just give me a call sometime this week, and we can talk more about that.
Mr. Ballard?
So on the interim, are those-- is that a pathway to be full-time?
It can be.
Okay.
Some people call it an audition.
Well, I was going to say pathway, but-- but okay. So we could look forward to perhaps a number of these on the interim report would become full-time teachers.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's good.
Except the ones that are retired. I don't--
True.
There are several full-time--
We do.
Some of those have come back from retirement.
I don't think they're coming back for good. Knowing those people.
Well, you can look at the certified hires. It's, you know, there are seven that was in our system already.
EAs.
There's an EA or--
There was some subs.
Sub.
A lot of times, a pathway is from ESP to EA to a teacher.
Okay. That's good.
Or substitute to a teacher.
Any questions on the personnel report?
I have--
Yes, sir?
I do have a question. Thank you, Ralph, but you made me have it. So on that pathway, say they're full-time EA, and then they go to-- I mean, full-time ESP to EA and on like that. Does their time start? Do they-- do they keep it all the way through? In other words, their longevity?
Yes, their-- their hire date is consistent. They-- we don't hire-- as far as being a teacher, it can be different. They would have to complete five years of--
Right, for the tenure part.
Exactly.
Yeah. I'm just thinking about--
But even for pay scale as well. I mean, they would have to complete certified--
Certified, you'd have to be certified as--
To get a full year--
Teacher scale.
Experience.
I was just wondering if that, like with the retirement piece?
Well, is there an EA that does go toward their TCRS, retirement?
That's-- that's what I'm concerned--
Yes.
Okay. That's good.
Okay.
Mr. Ballard?
Follow-up. I know everyone seems to be having trouble with bus drivers. Or how are we doing with bus driver manpower?
It's knock on wood. Right now, we're doing okay.
Still doing good?
Yes, sir.
Great. Great. And that includes the assistant?
Yes, sir.
As well? Am I saying that right? The assistant, the observer on the bus?
Yes, most buses have a bus assistant as well.
Yeah. Okay. Well, good. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Revenue and expenditure report. Ms. Williams?
Oh, yes. Hello, everyone. It's good to see you.
Good to see you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. It's good to be here. So we have two reports, two months on this first report covering the months of July and August. Typically, we-- at about this time of year, we are just now wrapping up our fiscal year-end from June thirtieth, and you'll see that not so much in our expenditures, but in our revenues. Typically, the first two months of revenue that we receive in July and August is really an accrual from the previous year. So if you look at your revenue report for the month of July on that comparison total page, you'll see income of just over seven hundred thousand dollars. We actually had revenue coming in, but again, a big portion of that was for June, the sales tax, property taxes, those kinds of large dollar items. And then in August, you see that jumps up considerably from seven hundred thousand dollars to six point three million dollars. And that's when we see the large money coming in. We'll start seeing this year's BEP monthly allocations coming in in the month of August, and we'll start seeing some sales tax coming in and also property tax. Property tax, not so much in the summer. It's still a smaller dollar amount, but our sales tax is-- came in. We just got July sales tax, and it was just under one point three million dollars, and it was about fifteen percent higher than it was this time last year. So Rutherford County as a whole, Murfreesboro City, Murfreesboro City Schools is benefiting from a very robust economy, and we see that primarily in our sales tax and also the healthy collection of our property taxes. So that negative number, I'm not concerned with. Our net income, that is a timing issue. What gets us through the day is our cash account, our surplus, that fund balance that we've talked about before that gives us the cash to be-- to be able to continue our operations. The expenditures jumped up a little bit and-- well, jumped up considerably in August, and that's when you typically see that three percent salary increase that you voted on last year. You generally see the effect of that on that first teacher payroll in August, and that's why we're seeing such a huge increase from July to August. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions for Ms. Williams? Thank you, ma'am. I'm sorry--
I had one. I thought-- I thought Amanda had her hand up first. On the revenue side, does it-- I don't think it does break down-- on the sales tax piece, is that just a collective sales tax, like whatever altogether, like food, entertainment, liquor?
All but the liquor.
All but the liquor. That's where I'm going.
We do--
I mean, I'm not going to the liquor store. I'm just going to the liquor question.
There is a separate mixed drink tax for Rutherford County that is shared, Rutherford County, Murfreesboro City. So there's a separate distribution calculation for that, but that is a separate revenue account, and we'll tax-- the alcohol tax and mixed drink tax is on the increase as well.
That's what I was-- that's where I was.
Yes.
That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ballard?
Ms. Williams, also, I think I've asked this before, but I know early on, we were starting the sports gaming betting, and I know there's money that's going back-- coming back to local education for that. Is that not correct?
I'm-- I'm not sure about that, but I'd be--
Well, I had asked the-- someone on the gaming commission and understood that that was going to happen, so maybe that's something you can take a look at and see if there's any rewards there. I know I try not to contribute to that, but it's-- but it's possible that it could happen. But it's-- it's online gambling for the--
Okay.
That's-- yeah, so it's like tax money available to come back to us, I hope.
Okay. I will definitely look into that. I do know that our voluntary pre-K grant is funded through lottery funds, and that's just over-- it's over a million dollars. It might be closer to one point one million dollars, but that pre-K-- those twelve, thirteen pre-K classrooms are, I'd say about ninety-five percent of it is lottery-funded. But I will look into that sports funding. I hope so.
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be a new line item they add there for income. That'd be great.
That would make you participate more, wouldn't it?
I hope it'd help me win more.
Make you feel less guilty.
It's all good for the children, right? See what I'm doing at the--
Okay. Sorry, I dropped my mask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Directors update. Dr. Duke, it's yours.
And let me first say, if there's money out to be found, Mr. Ballard, I have no doubt that Ms. Williams will find that money. So I want to-- I have no doubt about that whatsoever.
Good.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say congratulations to Mr. Ballard and Ms. Goff for earning your Level Two Board Member Distinction with the TSBA. That was a great honor to hear at that meeting, so congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
I have just a few updates, and then with your permission, I'll go into our State of the Schools report. But for my updates, first of all, during the September fifteenth city council workshop, the city council did approve their five-year capital improvement plan. The city's five-year plan also included the five-year improvements that we presented to the board in May for your approval. So we approved our five-year plan in May and went to the council, and they approved that and included our information there on that September fifteenth meeting. Many of these projects are going to be funded out of our county shared funds, which are held through the city, and now that we have both board approval and city council approval, we'll continue to work with city staff to plan for the implementation of these projects, and we'll keep the board updated on the status of these as we progress. At our next October meeting, I'll actually provide for you a revised list of the actual projects you approved and how those are being funded, whether we're funding those out of our school-based general funds, whether we're planning out of ESER funds, or whether they're coming with the city's-- the county's shared bonds. I'll be sharing those. Any questions regarding those? We're very excited, and thank you to Mr. Sackler and the council, of course, for supporting our schools in passing that. We appreciate that. This Thursday, again, to go with city council, we'll be seeking approval from the city council for a contract with Mid-South Bus. I wanted to update you on this. You'll see, if you watch the city council meeting, we'll be asking for the approval of a contract for two buses. The first of these buses is actually a replacement bus from the one bus that was unfortunately rendered inoperable from the August accident that we had. We did receive proceeds of ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to replace this bus. We will use those. Those funds have been given to the city for the county shared bonds, and then they will pay for it out of the county shared bonds for the new bus. The insurance payment did cover all but about fifty-five hundred dollars of the replacement cost for the bus. And again, I know we've-- we've already mentioned transportation once. Transportation has been down this bus, which we need our buses and our spare buses, and Mr. Rome and his staff have worked very hard to keep our buses running despite being down a bus, so we should have that bus right after fall break, which we're very excited about. The second bus that we're going to be approving, or that we're going to the city council on that contract for approval, is for one of two replacement buses that was actually in the CIP I just discussed. So in our CIP, we had put in there, we would want two replacement buses. Originally, we did not plan on purchasing these two additional buses until the-- Originally, we did not plan on purchasing these two additional buses until the spring of this year. However, the company we are buying the replacement bus for the wrecked bus had an additional one available. And we do have some concerns with our ability to find buses. There's, with all things, the shortage of supplies, the shortage and the work, the shortage of materials that are going, that's impacting our buses as well. So, now that we had approval from the board with our CIP, the city council with their CIP, because we had that additional bus ready, we're going to go ahead and purchase that now. So, we want to make sure we can get it, is what, what I'm saying. So, I wanted to update you on that. The cost of that bus is $101,300, which is less than anticipated and less than what was approved for in the CIP. Those are my only two updates, but with, if there's no questions on that, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to move to our State of the Schools.
All right, sure. Go right ahead.
Perfect. Hopefully, you'll see this on your screen. So, you can see it. Now, I will tell you, there is a very robust packet in front of you. And I gave you all the information and graphs we did, broken down in several different ways. I'm not going to go through all of that tonight with you. I just want to kind of give you a high-level overview of this information. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. We've already recognized our reward schools and our Level Five schools, which we're very excited about. But just know, if you have questions, please ask them, and then there's much more information in your packet if you want to follow that. So, as we begin to have this conversation about last year's test data, we do know that the state report card was released last week. So, this data is available publicly on our state report card as well. And as we talk about the data, I think it's extremely important that we think about the context with which we're talking about this data. So, I have this statement included. And it's important for us to remember that even though, and I'm very proud of the fact that in Murfreesboro City, we offered in-person learning for all of last year in some capacity, which is huge. We did have several times when we were in a hybrid format, both at the beginning of the year and right after winter break. So, we do know we had times when we had a large number of students living at home, working, I'm sorry, learning at home. We had 20% of our families who did full-time, remote instruction. That number did decrease to 12. And when you look at the entire year, we had, over the course of the year, over 5,000 quarantine situations. Last year, I think we all know, we've talked about it a lot, was really an unprecedented year. And we responded in a way, and as we go through our data, I want to make sure we're keeping that in mind as we look at this information. When we talk about our data, it's important to remember, to think about, we really talk about it in two contexts. The first is achievement, and then we'll talk about growth in a minute. But just for our audience who may be at home, or those that may have questions, when we're talking about achievement scores, which is what I'm going to look at first, what we're talking about is how our students did on a test on a day. This doesn't take into account where the child started, where the student started. It is how they performed that day on that test. And so, we can look at that. I'd like to start with our English Language Arts or reading kind of district snapshot. The first thing I want to draw your attention to is that 97% in the upper right-hand corner, that's our participation rate, which means we tested 97% of our students. That is a huge accomplishment. As a state, the goal and the expectation was to get at least 80. So, for us to get 97, again, our assistant principals who work that program did a great job getting our students in. If you start from the left, and we'll kind of work our way over, the first is our proficiency, or the percentage of our students who scored on track or mastered. What you'll see there is last year, in the midst of the pandemic, we had 34.3% of our students score in the on-track or mastered category. You can compare that, and I have it, with 29.8% in the state of Tennessee. So, you can see there that we are performing higher than the state average in terms of English Language Arts. Now, you all know that I've, we've talked a lot about my urgency, I feel, around reading scores in this district. And we're going to talk about how, why I think this is in some ways a success, and we'll look at that. But even though we know when we look at growth, that we had some successes, that we want to look at that 34.3% and say, we want to do better for our students, and we want to grow that number and continue to support our teachers. If you look in that middle category, you'll see our subgroup proficiencies. And when you look at that specifically, it's broken down by the different subgroups we have, student populations we have represented in our district. In your packet, I don't have it on here, you can, I have it broken down by year, so you can actually trace that, those proficiency rankings over year, over the year. We do see some variance in our subgroup proficiencies. And we know that as we're talking about our reading scores and improving our reading scores, it's not just about improving our students, but also being very specific around the subgroups of students that we're working with. And finally, that last graph, the line graph, is our proficiency over time. So, you can see I went back to 2017. You can see our proficiency ranking in 2017, 2018, 2019. 2020 is not there because that was the COVID year that we did not test, and then last year with 2021. What you'll see is between 2019 and 21, we did have a 2% decrease in our ELA scores versus a 5% decrease that the state saw. So, that's in one of those situations where I say, even though we know we want to continue to target and make our reading proficiency levels a goal for us to look at, that I see the fact that we only dropped 2% when you look at many districts dropped much farther than that as a success. As we began to implement our curriculum, we supported our teachers. So, I, I say that to say is, I think it could have been drastically worse, and it was in some districts that drop. So, the fact that in reality, we may, remained pretty consistent with the previous year is something we want to recognize as a success. But when you look at our ELA scores overall, the picture that we talk about in the office and with our schools is the consistency. We haven't seen much change in those scores since 2017, which is why we want to be really intentional about targeting our reading scores moving forward. The next graphs are the same information, so I'm going to kind of pull your attention to the gray box. So, what is our kind of next steps, right? We know that there's consistency in our achievement levels, both for students and our subgroups. So, we haven't seen major changes in our student scores or our subgroup scores in reading. We are outperforming the state average, in which we want to celebrate that, but we are still very focused on raising our achievement levels. So, what are our next steps for us? We're focused on implementing our high-quality instructional materials with integrity and continuing to support our teachers in that implementation. We're really targeting our professional development in reading in two areas, from the K-2 standpoint and the third through sixth grade. And knowing that the needs of kindergarten through second-grade teachers are very different than the needs of third through sixth-grade teachers, we want to continue to maximize our interventions, specifically to help address subgroups of students. And as we've talked about, we're using some ESSR money to really focus this year on second and third grade before and after-school tutoring. So, we are actually starting our first round of tutoring, targeting second and third grade, targeting reading in October when we get back from fall break. And we're being very intentional on that target. I was looking at a graph today, our second-grade students that we talked about, they have never had a school year not impacted by COVID. And we know that third-grade reading is so critical. So, we really want to say, we want to hone in there, we want to target there, and we want to really move the needle in that area as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions on reading before I move on to math, if anyone has any.
I would just also add that, you know, even without COVID, second and third grade is such a good time to be able to intervene because they're still so open to it and accepting of trying what we want them to do. And once they get older, they're just not as motivated, and, oh, great idea.
And we are, we had this conversation earlier, and we are limiting that tutoring group to no more than three or four students. So, we're being very intentional with our teachers. Our teachers have submitted applications if they want to teach one of those groups. We have the first round. Like I said, we'll do a second round for second semester. But we're being very intentional in saying, small groups that the teacher's working with on a really consistent way to help move the needle there.
I have a question. This is cumulative for grades three through six?
Second through six.
Second through six. Were there any outlying grades, or was it pretty consistent across the grade levels?
Fourth grade is where we saw our greatest successes this year, and that was a trend both here in this, in Marshall City, and I believe across the state. And I have to look at that, but we did see some higher scores in our fourth grade.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to math quickly to talk about here. And here, this is again, a real celebration, and I tried to color code them, so I know you have a very big packet. So, if you want to go to the orange heading, I apologize, you'll get that. Math for us continues to be a strong point for our district and something that we're very proud of. You can see that last year, in the midst of COVID, 40% of our students were on track and mastered in math, or had that 40% proficiency rate. You compare that to a little less than 26% at the state level. So, here, where we were just a few points above the state in ELA and reading, we are very high compared to the state in math. As you look at our subgroups, you'll still see some variance in our subgroup scores that we want to continue to address. But just like for all students, our subgroups are performing much better in math as well. And if you look at that last line graph that says proficiency over time, this is really what I'd like to draw your attention to. You can see in 2017 and 2018, we were hovering around that 44, 43 mark. And in 2019 was the year we saw really astronomical growth in math. And again, that was through that implementation of IREDDI, the work of Ms. Arnett, Ms. Klish, and their team really getting in there and supporting teachers. And again, that's the year that led to a large, almost 75% of our schools being reward schools because of these huge gains in math, with over 50% of our students showing proficiency, which we're really proud of. What you also see is when you look at this past COVID year, a really strong decrease. And that decrease and that decline really mirrors the state. The state and the nation, where they're seeing the biggest drop in scores and the greatest drop in scores is in our maths, in our math program. So, that is not specific to MCS. That big decrease is something we're seeing nationally. So, even though we saw that decrease, I think it's important to point out that we still have 40% of our students on track and mastered for math. But we are committed, and this is the language we've been using a lot around the schools, is we are really committed to raising those math scores to pre-pandemic levels. We know how to get great math scores. We've done it successfully in the past, and we want to raise those math scores back up to beyond where they were in the past. So, kind of our next steps for math, again, it really does show a picture of academic decreases specifically related to COVID because we're seeing that same percentage increase at the local, state, and federal level. We are outperforming the state, which we're excited, but we know we want to grow our students. So, we're going to continue to focus on implementing our high-quality instructional materials, that's specifically our IREDDI program, really working on some intentional professional development, whether it's math walkthroughs, networks. We have a great collaboration going on with MTSU right now, working with teachers in their first three years on math practices, which we've had some great trainings on already, and continuing to support those daily interventions. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have regarding our math data. Look at a few more things. All right, as we think about science, it's a much smaller graph, and here's why. This was actually the first statewide science assessment for third through sixth grade in the last three years. Because of the way the state assessment program works, this was the first time in the middle of COVID that these students had taken a science assessment in three years. So, although there's not as much comparison to say, what I will point to is how closely aligned our science scores are with our math scores. So, we're looking at that 40% on track and mastered in science, just like we are in math. So that we know that that's really very tightly aligned, and our goal continues to be to increase those science achievement level. Just as we plan on rapidly increasing our math scores post-pandemic, even though we know we're not at it yet, we're going to rapidly increase those science scores as well. That is our information on achievement. So, I'm going to take just real quick, a couple of slides on our growth. So, again, achievement is how they performed on that test on that day. When we look at growth, it's considering the history of the testing, and it's also considering how students moved compared to students across the state. So, this is a slide I really loved making because it was real easy, right? And that means as a district, we were a Level Five district in all areas. So, in our composite score, in our literacy score, our numeracy score, and literacy-numeracy, we had a growth score of five. These scores are made up specifically of our fifth and sixth graders. Those are the ones that have the data. At the end of this year, our growth scores, because we will have, if we have two consecutive years of testing, will be made up of third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. But these are the only students that have the data for this year. So, we see the Level Five in all areas, which is just fantastic. And I put this on here because it's a question I get a lot, which is, how is it possible that we actually went down in our achievement, but still have a Level Five growth? And so, what I put in this slide is, and I'll just kind of read it, we'll talk about it, which is that that growth expectation, which is what it's based off of, is set by how students across the state perform and the average performance. So, if you get a Level Five score, what it means is that the students in our schools moved ahead of where they were basically in the line. So, if you had lined up all the students as how they had performed in 2019 and where Murfreesboro City fell, and then you re-lined them up in 2021, we jumped up in the line, and that's what that Level Five is. So, compared to our peers, we moved up, and that's what that Level Five is. So, we're very excited about these Level Fives. I'm so proud of our fifth and sixth-grade teachers, but we're looking at it in conjunction with this achievement. Yes, we had great growth, but we are still going to move that achievement needle as well. This next slide is that broken down by subgroups, and again, you'll see the same thing. Our subgroups also were at Level Five, with the exception of our economically disadvantaged students, which was at a Level Three. And that means that they met the expectation. So, one year's growth for one year's time comparative to across the state, they are at that Level Three. So, we want to celebrate all of that information as well. So, in summary, as we think about where we are, we're very proud, considering where we could have been at the end of last year and where we are now. As I've said, when it comes to achievement, we outperformed the state in math in every grade category. In English Language Arts, we outperformed them in four out of five. Four, five of our schools are Level Five, two are reward schools, and I told Lisa Trail to make those fives as big as possible at the bottom. She did this graphic. So, Level Five for growth. There are five designations that a school system can get. We are at the advancing district designation, which is the fourth out of the five scores. And when you think about that in percentiles, what it also means is that we were actually at the 77th percentile when compared to other districts across the state, meaning we performed at or better than 77% of the district. So, a lot of hard work from our teachers, a lot of great work from our teachers. We have a lot to be proud of. We have a lot of work still to do. And I know if there's anyone that can do it, it's the team we have at our central office, it's our principals and our staff. So, even despite these COVID issues we're still dealing with, we got our eye on the instructional ball, and we're, we're working really hard not to take it off of it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments, Ms. Barton?
Just a comment, and I know you've said it over and over again, but I have to also say, what an accomplishment this is. And I just know how helpless teachers felt and principals felt last year about what they were trying to do and whether or not it was actually, if anything, was sinking in, much less enough. And for them, it's a validation that even though times were tough, they made some great choices. And yes, they can improve. We can always improve. But I think this really snaps a picture of our system that we don't need to forget.
Absolutely. It's great work. It really is great work.
Ms. Saddles?
I agree. This is excellent. The question I have is, is really how this is broken out on the subgroups. We have economically disadvantaged, and I know that's one of the subgroups. My question is an elementary one. How do we distinguish economically disadvantaged? I mean, in other words, I'm black, I'm white, I'm Asian or whatever, but I'm also, how does it, how is it different to say economically disadvantaged? Because it's not a, it's not a race.
Yeah, so those, that's a reporting category that actually we report on both the state and federal level. And that, the students who are economically disadvantaged, that, that student group actually is given to us by the state. is given to us by the state. So that would be students who are on some kind of direct sort of services from the state, whether it be TANF, they're receiving TANF funds, they're receiving some sort of government assistance with our WIC program. So the state actually gives us our, the names of students who are receiving those, and that's the population that makes up our economically disadvantaged group.
So they wouldn't, they're not counted twice? Like I'm in the white group and I'm also in the...
Yes, no, they are. They are. Yeah. So you absolutely, you can have a student here. So when you look at that graph specifically, where it says all students, that is if we, if we look at the scores of every student in our district, the next category is BHN, which is our Black, Hispanic, and Native American students. And that's how the state groups them as historically underserved students. And we say, the state says, if you look at just those students, who, that's how they performed, continue with economically disadvantaged, our ELs, and our students with disabilities.
Thank you for that explanation. That was going to drive me crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Great report. Great report.
Excellent reporting.
All right. We have any other business need to come before the board tonight? If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. Thank you by Mr. Ballard. All in favor, good night.